And the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The clerk, take the roll, please.
Mayor Bro.
Here.
District one, Morset.
Here.
District two, Mr. O'Connell.
Here.
Three, Rodamacher.
Here.
Four, Wyland.
Five, O'Malley.
Here.
Six, Virchell.
Here.
At this point in our agenda, we take comments and suggestions from the audience on any subject that isn't on the agenda. Is there anybody that would like to address the council at this time? Anyone? Got to ask one more time. Apparently not. We're going to take the consent agendas, and then we're going to go to the presentation by Bye Barsness on the future library proposal, and Madam Clerk will verbalize the consent agenda items for us.
To approve the regular meeting minutes and closed session minutes of January 21st, 2008. To approve claims per payment in the amount of $530,757.88. Additional information is available in the clerk's office. To approve the issuance of five regular operators licenses for the period February 5th, 2008 through June 30th, 2009. Additional information is available on request in the clerk's office. And to deny the application for an operator's license filed by Daniel Moss as recommended by the interim chief of police. To place on file the community access board minutes of January 22nd, 2008, and the Sankara EMS Commission minutes of January 28th, 2008. That is all.
What is your pleasure on the consent agenda? Mr. Mayor, I'd like to recuse myself. I'll move for approval.
Second.
Roll call vote.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Virchell?
Yes.
Rodamacher?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Motion is carried. We're going to have a presentation by Bye Barsness on the future library proposal and possible action on an advisory referendum for a new joint library building. After that, I will be leaving. I have a commitment that I can't get out of, and Scott will be taking over as the mayor for the rest of the evening. So with that, Bye, why don't you give us your executive summary?
Executive executive summary, Jack?
It's kind of like final, final.
Final, final.
As the lawyers say.
All right. Well, thank you, Jack, for allowing us to present to the common council tonight, and thank you, Councilman, for listening to us. The Hudson Library Foundation has been working on a project to propose a new library for this, new joint library for this community for about two years. And there's been a lot in the newspaper about us, particularly negotiating with the county, trying to get some dirt up on the corner of Vine and Carmichael, with no success. And last October, an opportunity presented itself in the form of a "for sale" sign that went up in front of the Nuclear Management Corporation building. And so we hopped on it to see if perchance this would make for a, an opportunity for this library and for this community, and involved consultants, excuse me, and have come to the conclusion that this would fit our program very nicely. You have a packet of materials that includes some pictures. I understand you toured the building, so I'm not going to spend any time talking about it, but, you know, the short version is, we think it would make an excellent library. The architecture, the views, the openness of the building would be perfect. You have a map of some adjoining properties. We're talking about just, at this point, the dark outlined areas, which is the building excluding the little building that's up on the corner of Second and Vine. And then there's a, we're going to start with the plan to convert this building, to give you some idea of how this program would work. And it's very sketchy at this point, but we're asking for authority to proceed and develop the details so that a firm decision could be made, hopefully sometime this summer. So if you would look at the document that's called Plan to Acquire and Convert NMC Building, it's a text document, looks like this. Schedule C. On Monday night last week, I presented step one to the Intergovernmental Advisory Committee. We had completed a preliminary document, and we presented it to the Intergovernmental Advisory Committee on which all of the partners participate, in which they all participate. The Village, the city, the town of Hudson, and the town of St. Joe. Troy is also a member of that group, but is not a member of the joint library. And I asked the mayors and presidents and chairs to schedule this topic on the first agenda for the month of February, and that's why I'm here tonight, to review this. What we're seeking is your approval for a non-binding referendum to appear on the April election. And there is in your file a draft of that. We'll get back, we'll get to that in a minute. As I have been working on this project for the last couple of years, I've had an opportunity to present it in stages and concepts and parts and pieces to the mayors and chairs, if you will, of these partners. And about a year ago, there was a strong indication that all were in favor of a non-binding referendum as part of the step. And we were planning to do this out in time, because we were planning to buy some ground and have a normal schedule of finding ground and arranging financing and conducting a fund drive, and then, you know, breaking ground and building a building. But, you know, when you, when you have your eyes on a building that has a "for sale" sign in front of it, you never know how long that opportunity might exist. So that's changed our entire timelines, and that's really why I'm here tonight. So item six on this step would be the non-binding referendum, April 1st. And then, we would be working on trying to tie this building up in the meantime, to get a contingent purchase offer, if you will, non-binding purchase offer, to have access to, or an opportunity to buy the building over, hopefully, a six-month period. Now, that's not going to necessarily be easy to negotiate, especially if there's anybody else interested in the building. But in order for the four municipals to go through the process of evaluation and make a decision, it's going to require a protracted period of time. So if we can't negotiate an option, we can't negotiate an option, but we want to start all the other steps moving as soon as possible. So, in a minute, we're going to look at some financial numbers, but while we're going through and waiting for the referendum, we need to, and we will, complete a firm budget and plan for the expense of acquiring and converting this facility. And we will deal with questions like, you know, how should it be owned? Can we raise the amount of philanthropy that we're projecting we can raise through a fundraising professional study, and come up with the exact municipal financing arrangements that we would recommend? And hopefully, by the end of April, to have a complete and thorough summary of what the project is and what it's going to cost, how it would be financed, how it would be operated, et cetera. Going forward with the library will require a new joint library agreement, because one of the features of the current agreement is, there is no authority to make any capital commitments for a new facility without approval of the partners. So, you know, we're, we can't go off and commit anybody to anything at this point. And then, you know, if we were really lucky and everything got going, and all the authorities and permissions and approvals by the partners happened, we could begin a fundraising, you know, about July 1st. Might finalize the building, purchase in September, demolish it, et cetera, and maybe a grand opening in September 2009. That's just a rough timeline to give you some idea of the steps. Preliminary, tonight. Final data for a final decision or firm decision from the partners. Sometime early summer decision, as soon as it could be made, if it's, if it looks like this, these preliminary numbers hold up and everybody's nodding yes, and then we proceed to make this project happen. So, that's kind of the step. It's a work in progress.
Bye. Excuse me for interrupting, but you'll be presenting tomorrow night at the Village, right?
Tomorrow night is the town of Hudson.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Wednesday night is the Village, and Thursday night is St. Joe.
So everybody will...
Everybody agreed to agenda this topic for discussion. And we're all, we're asking each for exactly the same thing.
True. And also, do we have to have everything prepared no later than the February 15th, if I'm not mistaken?
I think it's the 19th.
19th, I'm sorry.
19th is the day that the question has to be finalized.
Okay.
And we're trying to put together a uniform question. Everybody would put on the ballot exactly the same question, and so we would have a single posting, printing, if you will, noticing of this project in the newspaper. And in a moment, we'll look at, at least where that's, the sixth draft of that stands. It's still a work in progress, but it is moving forward.
When would we find out whether or not the rest of the government agencies are a or nay on this particular project?
Well, I'm hoping we'd know by Thursday night, at the end of the St. Joe meeting.
And when that happens, and let's assume that they were all positive, is it necessary for us to have a special council meeting here so that we can proceed in a legal manner?
It might very well, Jack, because with the question somewhat in the state of development now, I think somebody, we're going to have to all come back together and approve it. It won't be, hopefully, surprisingly different than what you see, but it isn't ready for prime time yet.
So if we take this particular position, you'll be working with our attorney and some of the council, if necessary, before it's a final, final?
Correct.
Okay.
I think you can make a decision on pursuing a advisory referendum, but the actual question...
But it's the mechanics after that.
Yeah, and, you know, there are four partners, two different law firms, and three different lawyers.
Simple.
Plus, we hired somebody to help us get started.
Yeah.
So...
You have a question?
I have a few questions. Do you plan on talking to the town of Troy to see if they'd like to join in?
Yes. Ray Knapp at the Intergovernmental Advisory Committee said that he's willing to present it to the town of Troy for the portion of Troy that is in the Hudson School District. These numbers don't reflect that. That would be a win, a gain for all of us. And I'm not going to assume it's going to happen, you know, until we hear. We will be presenting to them at their first meeting, which is April 14th.
Excuse me for interrupting, but I thought the whole council should have that background before we proceed it.
Now, I believe you've talked to the realtors that represent the building and the owners of the building. Are they, where are they at with, obviously, they'd only have a big process to go through here. Where are they at with receiving bids for the building, or willing to wait to see what happens?
I don't know the answer to the second question about willing to wait. I've been in contact with the broker a half a dozen times over the last eight weeks, telling them where we were. And, you know, the next big news is, is that, I'm hoping, you know, come Thursday, that the initial action to proceed has been taken by all of the partners. And then we can sit down and start talking to them more specifically. They have shown it to other parties, investor-type parties. You know, brokers are usually pretty tight-lipped about, you know, the status of anything. As of seven days ago, there were no offers being expected, but, you know, one could fall in any moment.
I guess my question then is, why, why a non-binding referendum, kind of on a time-sensitive issue here? Why wouldn't we go for a binding referendum, assuming, I mean, if, I don't know if you can write it, you know, if this, this, and this happens, can we, will you vote for this?
Well...
If A, B, and C happens, like if, if the Joint Library Board is behind this 100%, if the building's still for sale?
And all the government agencies?
I think there's too many contingencies, and it's not even clear who's going to own the building, and how the financing is going to be worked out. And I think the purpose of the advisory referendum is to get a read from the residents of each participating municipality on whether they're behind this with their tax dollars. I just think there would be too many contingencies, and I think it's a decision that ultimately either the Joint Library Board is going to have to make, or the municipalities, depending on borrowing, capacity level, levy limits. I mean, I just don't think you can have a binding referendum on this, certainly not at this stage.
Okay. So, what happens if we have a non-binding referendum, and people say yes, and then everything's approved, our purchase agreement done, building's bought, well then, the binding referendum comes up and it doesn't pass?
Well, it depends on what, I mean, if we need to have a referendum to exceed levy limits or to borrow, each municipality is slightly different, and Betty, jump in on this, in terms of what the city would have to do on borrowing. But I know, I think the village of North Hudson would have to have a referendum. Maybe the city wouldn't. It just depends on how the deal is put together, and who owns, and unique details for each municipality. But Betty, if you've got better information, I'm happy for you to...
Well, I think it's important, number one, to bring the question, first of all, to the government agencies. Let's get an agreement there. Then the second part is put together some of the answers to the questions that everybody has brought forth of late. Who's going to own the building? Who's going to do the financing? Different questions like that, which will come after we get some sort of agreement from the government, and also from the people who are eventually going to pay the bill. And we'll have those details when we go to the non-binding referendum. But I think it's sequentially, we have to do those in that particular sequence. But it's up to you.
I think you're explaining it quite well. It's essentially, we're not going to go to all this work if people don't want us to. And the four groups that we need to be concerned with right now are the four municipalities that make up the joint library agreement. If, if we don't have all four jurisdictions say, yes, we do want to discuss this, and we want to take this to our taxpayers and our residents, our voters, there's no point in proceeding.
Exactly.
And so, this is just simply the first step. We're not committing to anything. We're simply going to make a show tonight as to whether or not we're willing to continue the discussion with the other three municipalities. And if they all say, yes, we're willing to also continue with the discussion, then we move on to the next step.
Or it could be over.
Yeah. It could be over by Thursday. Don't know.
And then, we can call a special meeting if we all want to proceed in a given direction identified by all the four government groups.
Okay, all right.
Can I just, I understand, and that's great. Just for curiosity, who's going to negotiate the final price of the building? Is it the Library Board, the Library Foundation?
Good question.
At the moment, the Foundation is set up to do that, and not the Board.
Does that work on a legal basis?
Well, it's going to depend on who's going to take ownership of the building. And we don't know yet. The joint library is, has statutory authority to acquire property. But obviously, since their budget is provided by the participating municipalities, it's going to depend on the financial willingness of the participating municipalities. So it's everyone's going to have to work together in terms of coming to an agreement on financing this thing.
I think everything starts after you get the non-binding referendum from the people who are eventually going to pay the bill. Then you get to the details of who owns what, how's the financing going to be done, and those, and there's many more questions unanswered at this particular point. But let's go through, first of all, the government, the referendum, then let's get the details on how we're going to proceed, who's going to own what, who's going to do the financing, and et cetera.
Yeah. We would hope to begin discussions to try to tie the building up once the four bodies give us the nod this week. It would be a non-binding purchase commitment.
Some sort of contingency...
With all the contingencies to protect everybody, and everybody'd have a chance to look at those contingencies and be comfortable with them.
So it's the fear of the unknown, and the contingency would be with the, with the building that we could drop out if all four don't want to continue in that positive direction.
Exactly.
Okay.
Bye, may I ask you, just to verify once again, because I think this is a really important point, I want to make sure that everybody understands. If an option to purchase the building is executed after Thursday's meeting of the fourth municipality, that option will not be done by any of the municipalities or the joint library. It'll be done by the Library Foundation, which is a private organization not binding upon any of us. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Yep.
Yeah, so the funding comes from the Foundation for that tying up...
That's what I want everybody to understand, is that we're not putting out any taxpayer money. We're not putting anybody's money at risk. It is a private organization that would be negotiating the option to later turn over the building to, I would assume, to the joint library.
And the Foundation will put the contingencies on so that if, in the final analysis, if necessary, they could...
Yeah. Walk. If we have to, we can walk.
So I think that it's not a bad approach, but we have to do it in phases and in sequence. So we may have to have a meeting between now and the 19th, if everybody is willing to go ahead, so that we can get the proper nomenclature on what that referendum is going to say. Correct?
Yes.
Go ahead.
All right. If you look at Schedule D, this is the numbers page, to give you some idea. It's an Excel sheet. Do you have it?
Yep.
All right. For comparison purposes, I've shared on the left-hand column, the build-new strategy. That's what we'd been working on until October. And, you know, in that, what we were going to pay for land and site work was, you know, very speculative, but it had some basis in some of the stuff that the county had been publicizing. And then the construction costs were provided by the consultant that the Library Board hired, and were confirmed by BWBR, which is the architect that we've been working with, trying to evaluate these, the comparison of these two, and also to look carefully inside the NMC building to see if it would work. See, would the program fit, and can the building, you know, hold the books, basically. And so, if you skip down toward the total project estimate, nine million, nine and a quarter, basically, for the NMC building, and 12, and almost 12 and a half for the build-new strategy, to give you some idea. So, there's a 25% saving, roughly, compared to a build-new strategy, if we can make this NMC thing work for us. I arbitrarily, the asking price on the building is 3.8. For purposes of these numbers, I arbitrarily said, jeez, we ought to be able to get, you know, reduce it by at least 10%. You know, we're all hoping we can do a lot better than that. The demolition and renovation, including a new elevator, that building has one elevator way back in the northeast corner of the building, and it would not allow us to control visually traffic coming and going and going upstairs. So we'd have to add another elevator more centrally located by the door. And that's about 140,000 of the 1,009. We would be opening the, taking out the private offices, and then kind of piecing things back together. These estimates for the cost of this construction were done by Paul Kuyak from Madsen Johnson. You know, the best numbers he could do with quite limited information. So they're really broad budget estimates. But I've been assured by them that, that these are good enough for preliminary decision-making. The lower level of that building is a garage currently, and their proposal is to convert it to, and bring it up to office specs, basically. And that's the 660,000. They have to take the floor out and put a new floor in. And then the load strengthening are those two other items, which totals about $450,000. So we'd have the building, land configured and ready to be used for a library for 6.4 million. Furnishing number was provided by the consultant. Moving was provided by the consultant. And then the architecture, the professional fees were provided by BWBR mostly, and the fundraising consultant that we have had. I added legal because I know we're going to hire lawyers to do borrowing. And so I put a number in. I don't know if that's a good number or not, but that's what I put in. There's an inflation factor of 200 grand and a general contingency of 600 grand, bringing the total to, oh, and then the collection enhancement. Our current collection is woefully short of what a community this size should have. And this number of $550,000 does not take it up to a 1.0. It takes it up, I think, to about a .8 from about a .5, as I recall the numbers. And then over time, there'd be some more enhancement. We think that we can raise philanthropically half of the money, four and a half million dollars. That's the first two items in the financing. One is called Business and Community Partnerships, and the other's called just philanthropy, local and regional. Not national grants from, you know, the Carnegie Foundation and, or earmarks from Ron Kind. But things that we would all consider general philanthropy. The library currently has funds of $800,000. We think there's a half million dollars at least of national grants, and that leaves 3.4 million of public funds. So the partners in total, at the end of the day, would come up with 3.4 million. Now, our job in this next 60 to 90 days is to prove all these numbers out. These are just our best guesses today, to make sure that we know what this is. 20-year financing, today rate, this was a rate before the half-point cut a few days ago from Ellers, it was 4 and 1/4% 20-year financing. So the annual debt service would be $255,000 for all partners together. And that works out to $9.42 per capita. The population numbers are just below that, and I tried to get from everybody what they're using currently as their population numbers, and they're subject to probably changing a little bit, but probably not too far off the money. So there's about 27,000 people in the, in the political entities served by this library. And so I allocated the 255,000, I allocated, first of all, I allocated the $3,404,000 to the, to the four partners. So the Hudson share was $1,474,000. Do you see that number?
Yes.
And that's based on the 43% of the population over on the left-hand side of that line. And the town of Hudson is 29%. The Village and St. Joe are almost the same size. So again, these are just proximate. The annual payment from the town of, from the city would be $110,000, $111,000, if that were, you know, how much we borrowed. Now, down at the bottom, you know, our budget this past year, funded by the municipalities for the library, was $609,000. We think it's going to cost a million bucks to run a new building. And that's based on putting some numbers together, using this building in particular... And that's based on putting some numbers together, using this building in particular, and also data collected from other libraries of the same size. And there's a national databank of, of information about what operating budgets are. So is this exact? No, it's not exact, but it's, it's again, a level that's decisionable. And when I get into talking about the numbers that I used in the, in the explanatory statement, I added both the amount of municipal financing, I made that bigger, and I also made the operating budget bigger. So last year, the city provided 254,000. Going forward, it would be providing 430,000, so there's a $175,000 increase in operating expenses. Why is that? We've been operating a very small library, very substandard, on the very cheap. And again, this budget is very much in line with what we've seen from other libraries of similar sizes. And, you know, that's just a fact. So there's a twofold cost increase, servicing the debt and larger operating expense for the library. Any questions about those numbers?
Have you done a feasibility study yet for raising the funds privately?
Not yet. We have, we have contracted with a firm to do that.
Okay.
And that's one of the tasks that will commence, you know, if, if we get through this week with everybody's head nodding yes, then we'll do a feasibility study. And we need to do that. The guy, the consultant's name is Andy Curry. He's done a lot of, of studies, including studies in and around this, this part. He's a Minneapolis-based guy, and has good connections with the Anderson Foundations and, and, you know, his, his preliminary judgment was that we could do that. But he needs to come and touch the flesh.
Any other questions, Abhi? I did ask Betty to put together the key issues for the city to consider, and we all have a copy of that. And Betty, you want to give us the highlights there? We got Abhi's approach, let's look inside and see what our financial people are saying.
And like Abhi's figures, these are, these are preliminary figures, too.
Right.
I mean, we'd have to probably get down and do some really calculating here to get, get the good figures that we're going to want. One of the things that the city has to consider is that this is on the tax or the assessment rolls at this point, generates about $52,000 a year in property taxes that are distributed among all the districts. The city shares about $13,000 of that. So that would roll back onto the taxpayers, should we take that off of the, the assessment roll. I think the other key issues are, and you know, these are, are what the mayor referred to, is that we're going to have to iron out later, is the debt. Who's going to carry the debt? If the other districts aren't willing to carry the debt, is the city going to carry the debt? If the city issues the, the bonds, or we would have to have actually a 20-year bond, we would have to go out a little bit more formally, where we would have a 30-day period for people to actually petition if they did not want us to issue that debt. And so that's one of the things to consider. The other thing to consider is we'd be using up some of our debt capacity when we're also looking at using debt capacity for the possibility of public safety. If we did issue debt and asked the other districts to participate and pay off a portion of that debt, that would come out of their operating revenue and have to come under their levy limits. So if they were going to help participate in the debt and they couldn't afford to, they'd also have to have referendums to go outside their levy limit to pay for that portion of it.
Right.
Let's see. Operating-wise, the city's portion, we could probably absorb that in the growth that we're looking at for next year. However, we probably would not be able to do much more other than that. When you put it all together, 175,000, and we probably have growth of maybe up to 350,000 next year, we'll have just a little left over to take care of the increase in fuel costs and those type of things. Otherwise, we probably would have to go outside the levy limit and do a referendum for that operating portion, too. One of the things, and, and Abhi and I can work on this, too, when we get down to the, the calculation, one of the things is the city's 400, the city contributed 400,000 of that 800,000 that he's talking about. So in fairness, that should come off of the city's portion of our debt or our contribution. That came in through impact fees, and Village of North Hudson has about $20,000 of impact fees. So that's one of the things to, to look at. The other 400,000 that he's talking about is their fund balance. They've acquired and accumulated a fund balance over the years. They've been very, very, very good with their budget and accumulating a little bit at a time. They've also gotten donations, I think, of over $150,000 towards it. But I would advise them that they should not bring that down below 150,000 because they still have to meet payroll. So, you know, those are numbers to work out. And other than that, I don't know any other issues, but I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Oh, I didn't want us to figure that these are negative figures, but we, we certainly should consider those when we get into that second portion of negotiation. Remember, the first thing we want to do is make sure all of the government agencies are in accord in moving forward. Then we'll get to the details on financing in, in unison with Abhi and also with Betty. So I just want you to have those particular facts when we get to that particular point in our decision. But I think the decision this evening is to whether or not we want to proceed in unison with the other government groups to move to the next step.
I would like to make a motion for discussion.
Okay.
I move that contingent upon the other three municipalities also voting in the affirmative this week, that we agree to move forward and schedule a short special session before February 19th, because it needs to be six weeks before the April 1st ballot, to move ahead with presenting the public with a referendum question.
I'll second the motion.
Discussion.
Do you want to put advisory referendum in your motion?
I'll put advisory, certainly.
Any additional comments?
This is the first step, I think we just move forward.
We'll get to some details as we get into the second portion of this. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you for.
Thank you.
Great presentation. I'm going to have Scott take over at this particular point.
Jack, I'd just like to say one additional thing. If we can get the four nodding yes, that is going to be a real accomplishment and a real boon to the community and to everybody's benefit. And the reason we want a uniform question is we want everybody going to their citizens asking exactly the same thing, being in fact arm-in-arm to try to get this thing done. And the more solidarity that we exhibit, the better the case will be, you know, in each of the municipalities, I'm sure.
Each of those municipalities will have the specific dollar figures for their portion.
Absolutely. They're, they're going to get the same materials.
Of the overall, right?
Yep.
Okay.
They get the same materials that you got. There's, you know, everything is the same. There's no, nothing different. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Scott, do you want to take over?
I've got to leave here. I'll leave the agenda right here.
Thank you.
You also are going to have a closed session.
Yes, we are.
Thank you. Don't forget David.
David's right in my line of sight.
Okay.
No problem. Thank you. I would like to remind the council, as I always do on such occasions, that although I've assumed the chair position, I do not relinquish my vote to represent the 5th district. So I will be voting along with you. Something the mayor cannot do unless there's a tie. Let's go back to the regular agenda and finance committee. The application of Chipotle Mexican Grill of Colorado LLC for a Class B beer license doing business as Chipotle Mexican Grill at 1021 Pearson Drive.
Move to approve.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. This was moved to be approved by finance in their 6:30 meeting. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So carried. Nothing for public works or public safety or parks. Let's move to unfinished business. Denny, can we call upon you at this time? Denny Donald will step up. We're going to talk first about the Carmichael Road improvements and the St. Craig County proposal for improvements of the road, that intersection with.
May I respectfully ask if we can go down to number two, because that's.
Okay. Number two first.
Number two is the cost estimate for the Carmichael Road Mill and Overlay project. Really, that request by the common council was for budgetary purposes for 2009 or 2010. Mr. Tom Zulli estimates that to, to a two-inch mill and overlay for Carmichael Road from Cooley Trail to Crestview Drive would be approximately $660,000. Again, that's for budgetary purposes. To Mill and Overlay, the area from a two-inch, from Cooley Trail to approximately 700 feet north of Cooley Trail would be a cost estimate of $18,975. Now, the purpose of that estimate was for comparison and discussion within item number one, the Carmichael Road Improvement St. Craig County Proposal.
Denny, quick question. Is it Cooley Trail to Crestview or Cooley Trail to Cooley Road?
Cooley Trail, no.
660,000.
Cooley Trail to Crestview Drive.
Okay.
The 660,000.
Why, why wouldn't we go to Cooley Road and do that intersection as well?
Well, most has state. I think the state would have responsibility for the intersection.
Okay.
It's my understanding.
All right. Do we know if they're going to be doing that anytime soon?
No, I do not. We could ask.
Alan, at our previous meeting, you had a question about any involvement with the school district.
Correct.
If, the memo that Denny composed on February 1st does address that. I don't know if, you've had a chance to read that, I'm sure, $26,000. It's basically a savings for the county doing this, a savings to the school district, which they would then pass on to the city. Does that meet with your approval, or do you have any other questions?
No, I think that's what we were talking about, is, the question I'd have is, has anybody talked to the school district about that, or?
No, I, that was discussed in mid-December, and they're agreeable to that, yes. They've committed to the 26,000.
Can we discuss financing for this for just a moment? Betty, could you address that issue of where we're going to be taking, where we would be taking 600 and, approximately 680,000 from?
We presently budget about 80,000 in Mill and Overlay, or, I'm sorry, 160,000 in Mill and Overlay. We are also budgeting and bonding this year about 400,000 in Mill and Crestview. So what I would probably suggest to council is that we would have to do a bond or include it in the next bond issue that we'll do.
Okay, so we can't take action on that tonight, then?
You're looking at 2009.
Yeah.
Right. We.
We probably, probably wouldn't want to do anything till we budget for next year.
Right. But this is a, a good information point. Denny, this is part of item number one, which is the Carmichael Road improvements and the St. Craig County proposal, which includes widening of the road. And now the county says they feel we don't need that extra footage as easement.
We don't need, we don't need additional land, is what they're stating. My, my comment to the county is, I made contact with the owners of the adjacent property. Their mortgage company or banker that holds the bank institution that holds the mortgage on the property called me, but they were not committed one way or the other, whether they would deed or sell the right-of-way at a minimal cost. However, in my conversations with St. Craig County Highway Committee, they now believe that they can do the improvements as previously proposed within the existing right-of-way. Now, if we can get the additional right-of-way, that just gives us a little more cushion. But they believe they can do it within the existing right-of-way. So that, that from a financial concern is now removed.
And we had a timeliness issue with the county, did we not? Would, they wanted to know, get an answer from us as to our participation?
Well, you know, they're not, I'm sorry, Scotty, I mean to cut you off. They're, they're not pushing for an answer, but I, they are doing work. I mean, they're spending time, doing survey work, doing other general engineering work for this part of the project. You know, if we're not going to do it, at least I could let, let them know that they aren't expanding any more funds, their funds on this. Basically, from the city's standpoint, the improvements from Cooley Trail to approximately 600 feet north basically ends up costing the city about $14,000. And most of that money is really for the additional lane that's being extended. By the time you took the school share, took that off, we're about $20,000 versus $18,975. So we're within $1,000. And I think at this point, knowing that the county's price is firm, you know, they, you know, their first proposal said, this is the estimated cost. I said, we can't do a estimated cost. You've got to give us a firm price for us to give, give this consideration. They agreed to that. They also agreed that we would not have to pay them until after January 1st, 2009, so we could put this portion of the project into the budget. Now, the question is, we could budget it for 2009, we wouldn't have to pay them in this fiscal year. The other question is, is the two-part section of the improvements. The area on Carmichael Road north of Cooley Trail or the Cooley Trail intersection, the two are not necessarily combined. If we say yes to the Carmichael Road, we say no to the Cooley Trail intersection, that they're not going to do the project. We can take both of them, or we can take one, which is most likely to be the Carmichael section of it, or we can take neither one of them. So it's a proposal to the city.
So really, we're looking at, we're looking at $740,000, is that?
If, if the county came in and did the area north of Cooley Trail up to cover where the sanitary sewer is going to be installed, then you take that 20,000 off, and you're looking at a balance of 640,000, correct? For budget, for budgeting for Mill and Overlay in 2009 or 2010, whichever year the city would decide to do that.
So the county is looking for an answer from the city on the 19, 20,000 commitment at our earliest opportunity, which could be tonight. But the council's.
That would be payable this year or in 2009?
No, payable after January 1st, 2009. We would not have to pay it in 2008. They're agreeable to doing that.
That's what I thought.
But they, they're looking for a commitment now or relatively very soon.
They'd like to know if they're going to, to continue pursuing the project, or they're going to move their efforts somewhere else.
Exactly.
Well, I'd like to make a motion, if I could, to approve the $20,000 to complete this project or to become, to do this project to be payable in 2009.
I'll second.
Any further discussion, or have we already had it?
Do we need, well, an exact figure here, or is?
Well, we have a figure of basically 19,000 or 20,000. Why don't you amend your motion and say no more than 20,000?
20,000.
Is that acceptable to the second ear?
Yes.
Any further discussion?
I have a question for Denny.
No, I, I don't think we're talking apples and apples.
Okay.
I want to make sure that we are. The, the total, because we're, we're at 58,450, north of, north of Cooley Trail. Take off 26,000, we're at 32,450. Well, I'm saying if you applied the 20,000 to do the Mill and Overlay, you'd be down to an extra expenditure of doing the one extra lane of about 14,000. So the amount, if you're going to budget it, it's got to be 32,450.
To mesh with what the county's going to be doing with White.
If you want to accept the county's proposal for the area north of Cooley Trail.
Thanks for that clarification, it's an important point. Do you wish to amend your motion to the new dollar figure?
32,450.
Why don't we say no more than 35,000?
That's fine.
Is that acceptable to you, Denny?
And, no, go ahead with that consideration.
Okay, with the second ear, if we change that again, okay. Any further changes we want to make to these motions?
Did your question answer?
Denny, if we proceeded and did Crestview, or Crestview, Carmichael from Crestview all the way out at the same time, is there any savings to us? The equipment's there. Is there any construction savings, or?
Well, I, the only, the only concern is we got a, we got a fixed price to get this done this summer, right after the sewer goes in. We don't have a patch job. We have that, we have a whole new surface up to basically what's called a bull's nose as far as the curb. I mean, that's approximately where that goes. That's going to be done.
Yeah.
It's, you know, it doesn't come back, we don't have to shut that portion and roll down next year or year after. That portion's going to be done, plus it's a fixed cost. 660,000, God bless Tom, but it's only an estimate at this time. And we don't know what the tumors prices are going to do. We got a fixed price, now.
That project, that project will be done this year, and the Crestview to Cooley will be done two thousand and nine.
As soon as.
Possibly, yeah.
As soon as.
Soonest, right, so.
Okay, well, it was just, I just wanted.
I, I just see the advantages of getting that done now, and that getting cleaned up. And from my perspective, that's the advantage, I believe, plus it's a fixed cost.
Right.
Danny's recommendation is obviously that we strike while the tar is hot, and we have a motion to that effect. And a second, any further discussion?
I'll take a comment?
Certainly. Why don't you come up to the microphone, please?
Paul, you had a question about the Mill and Overlay Project to Crestview. Actually, my measurements represented from past Carmichael to the bridge, then the portion of asphalt from the bridge to Cooley Road.
Well, that's why I asked the question, because it said Cooley Road to Cooley Trail, that's why I wanna clarify that. So the six sixty would be include that section of, intersection of Cooley Road and Carmichael.
Goes through the exit two interchange, basically.
Okay. That's what I wanted.
Thank you.
Thanks for clarifying, Tom.
All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So carry. Thank you, Danny.
I just, one, I just want more, one, the second portion was the intersection of Cooley Trail, I'm assuming we're not accepting that, and I'll notify the county that we're not, that was a thirty thousand, or twenty-seven thousand. Basically, it was realigning, again, doing pavement. Our engineers said when we did the school review way back when, the interchange didn't need, but I'm assuming our motion is, we're not going to accept that. That portion of the project.
I'm confused now. I thought we were.
County wants to straighten it, and our engineers say we don't have to.
Well, yes, yeah. Oh, that part, yeah. Okay, now I'm, now I'm back on track with you. Does the council wish to take that issue up?
What are your thoughts, Danny?
Well, again, that, it cleans the project up. It, it makes that intersection aligned, it's at a little, it's not at a ninety-degree angle. It widens those, it brings new curb, it widens it a little bit, you'll have new, you'll have new pavement, you'll have new paint on it, it'll be, and it'll fit in looking very similar to the roadway. But it's, it's not absolutely, it's not absolutely necessary. But again, you may have to go back in a few years and take a look at, not necessarily with the Carmichael Road Mill and Overlay, you may have to go back and take a look at that, where you wanna make an investment in Mill and Overlay at some time in the future. That portion of it, again, would clean that up and have it done. And then that, that roadway area, and the only reason the county's saying, because it is inside the city jurisdiction, it's not, it's not inside the county jurisdiction, so.
Danny, with your permission, I'd like Chuck Schwartz with BRA to weigh in on this for just a moment. Chuck, would you mind coming up and discussing this briefly, and giving us your, your view on this?
Yeah, that, that dollar figure was thirty-two?
Well, it's thirty.
Thirty thousand nine hundred.
Thirty thousand, but they're deducting three thousand five hundred, so it comes out twenty-seven, twenty-five, I believe.
Yeah, and if you recall during that, the transportation, transportation study that was done during the discussions with the school, we did have Shelley Johnson, our transportation engineer, look at it, and, and, you know, at the time, the additional traffic being generated by the school, he didn't see a reason that is absolutely necessary to, to reconfigure that interchange. Mr. Donald did an excellent job of describing that, you know, there are some advantages if you're in there, you're gonna have to, they're gonna be cutting a pipe across that interchange as, as part of their improvements. So it is nice, if you're gonna dig open the intersection, to get it all straightened out and to improve it, to make it a ninety-degree interchange. So it is an ideal time to do that work. Not absolutely necessary, but, you know, if, if you can find it in your budget, it's a good time to get in there, clean up the entire intersection, and, you know, make it function and, and look nice all at the same time.
Do we have this in funding, Betty? Be next year's budget.
This, this portion?
Yep.
That's correct.
Everything that the county's proposed is, they're agreeable for the city to pay out after January first, two thousand nine.
Well, this has to be done at some point in the future.
Yes, I think the next time it needs to be reconstructed, it would make sense to get in there and straighten out that interchange.
Is that for safety, safety reasons?
Yes, it's, it's not a ninety-degree, and, you know, and if it isn't.
We'll be making an actual T-intersection.
That's correct.
An exact ninety degrees. If it's a safety consideration, I think sooner rather than later. Don't mean to go against Shelley Johnson's recommendation, but what I'm going to.
Well, I agree, Scotty, I mean, if it's gonna be done, if it has to be done in five years anyway, or whatever the case may be, why wouldn't we do that now? I mean.
Like you said, he's gonna have it dug up with a, to put a pipe in there, so.
So we're looking at an additional, let's round it to, say, twenty-eight thousand?
Twenty-eight thousand.
Twenty-eight thousand dollars.
And, and Shelley Johnson would agree with us that the, the ideal situation is to, to square that up and to improve that. So you're not necessarily going against them, it's just you're getting it done right and completing it sooner.
So my question would be, if the school wasn't there, would we do this?
No.
So now we're back to your original question, is how much would the school like to contribute to this, this effort?
Well, I mean, if, I mean, if the county's proposing and doing it, because they're, they're just trying to improve.
Okay.
Now, when we ask Shelley, is, does the intersection need to be done due to the school project? The answer's no. That's why they pressed the school, and try to, I mean, fairness of the.
Sure, absolutely.
You're not pressing that, that had to be included.
The school had no position on the safety at that intersection?
No, no, Shelley said the intersection did not have to be, in his traffic analysis, said the interchange did not have to be reconfigured.
Well, I understand that, but I thought we were very clear when the school was here asking for annexation, that they would participate in all costs associated with the school. And one of my biggest concerns was this intersection, and to do it right. And I agree with Al on that, they should be, you know, partners in the cost of that, because it's, as Chuck said, we wouldn't be doing this if the school wasn't there. And I think we should ask them to, to help fund the cost of making the intersection safe and have it done the right way.
Well, I certainly can discuss it.
I think we want to wait until we get that answer.
That's fine, I mean, I'm going to go back and I'll tell the county yes on the Carmichael Road.
Yes.
Portion, I'll tell the school tomorrow and discuss the.
Thank you. Thank you, Chuck. Thank you, Danny. Did we take the final vote on the motion? We talked so much about this.
We, there was a motion, I think that we have to deny it or post.
No, no.
Well, did you make a motion on the twenty-some thousand?
No, no.
I think just on the first part.
No, the other motion we did vote on, though, just wanted to make sure. Okay. Moving on to new business, to consider changing the date for our second council meeting this month, from the eighteenth to the twentieth, because Monday night, the eighteenth, these chambers will be needed to be available for setup of the voting equipment. The primary is on the nineteenth, so we would move to Wednesday, the twentieth.
I'll move to move the meeting.
I'll second that. Any discussion, any questions about that? It'd be the same time, seven o'clock on the twentieth, Wednesday. All in favor?
Aye.
It's, anyone opposed? That's passed. Now, the amendment to Lake Maloo Lower Dam, the joint agreement, you have that in your Are there any questions about that before we get into voting on it?
Is this just a housekeeping detail?
It basically is. It's saying, don't spend more than eleven thousand dollars without getting okay. Betty, would you like to discuss that?
I apologize, because I haven't a lot of time to look at that, but I, what I was thinking about when they said eleven thousand dollars, I would rather see it a budget based on percentages or something. Eleven thousand dollars is just kind of an arbitrary figure that we've been using, you know, for budgeting purposes. So I would like to probably see more of a, not to exceed or increase by a certain percentage each year, otherwise, I see a problem with every time we're going to do something, having to go to all these things, if it hits twelve thousand, or, or eight thousand, or nine thousand, or, I just, the eleven thousand dollar figure just didn't.
So Betty, would you like us to hold this over while you get a chance to stay?
Could we, till I get a better chance to look at it, and maybe call the county and talk to them about it a little bit, because I'm sure that's where this came from.
Is that okay with the council members?
One other thought to bring up, Jack had mentioned that currently the city pays all the inspection costs and everything, doesn't seek reimbursement for that, so they really should as part of the operating budget of that dam. So that was another issue to kind of iron out with the people.
Would you go into that issue as well, Betty? And come back to us at our next meeting?
Sure.
Thank you. Now, there's a gentleman in the audience who's been waiting patiently, Mr. David Nelson, who is here with the River Cities proposal to dock a large vessel, and I mean large vessel, overnight in Hudson during July of two thousand ten. David, if I am correct, this is the equivalent of nine barges, which is about sixty-five thousand square feet. Am I right?
Six hundred by one hundred eight.
Yeah.
Approximately, yeah.
About sixty-five thousand square feet.
Any of you care to have one of these?
You have an attractive packet that was provided to you?
I trust all of you.
I watched, I even watched the DVD, David. You do a nice presentation in it. It's essentially a floating condominium community. Novel idea. Very attractive when you are faced with the prospect of being able to travel to whatever season you want by going up and down the Mississippi River.
Right. Wisconsin's best climate, July twenty-eighth to thirtieth, that's when we had planned to be here.
Are you saying we only have good climate those three days, July twenty-eighth to thirtieth?
I've, I've lived in St. Paul my whole life, so I think we're close enough climate-wise, I'm an expert.
Exactly. Please, take the floor and brief the council.
Okay, well, good evening, and thank you for letting me have the opportunity to explore the possibility of stopping in your town in the future. So if you've had time to look at the DVD, that's great, you really get a good feel for what it is, but it's a floating condominium, and everybody buys their condominium and then shares the cruising expenses, and they are the owners of the boat. River Cities markets the vessel, which is happening now, and once it's built, we will professionally manage the vessel as well. The current state of development is, we're in a pre-sale state, and we hope to be pre-sold by about midsummer, and at that point, we'll begin construction, hopefully this next fall. The process kind of is, is in a parallel state where we aren't only selling, but we also need to talk to all the municipalities where we'd like to stop. And we would like to stop here in Hudson for a night or two, hopefully into the future for every year, for the next hundred years. And where that would happen, and if there would be a fee associated with that, that's the sort of thing I wanted to discuss with, with you people tonight. And the, the boat itself will be six hundred feet long by a hundred eight feet wide, and it'll house approximately three hundred fifty to four hundred residents. The way it'll work is, let's say we had, had just finished in Stillwater after a few days there, we would find our way down here about midday, and I'm not sure where we would park along your banks, that would be, perhaps it would be adjacent to your park. That's totally up to the city, if you, if you do like our plan. And the people would either have the option, if we could possibly drop, drop a gangway to shore, that would be one option, another would be, we would have a shuttlecraft bringing people back and forth from the boat to the shore. Why do they wanna be in this town? Because they want to enjoy everything any tourist would, they'll, they'll use your restaurants, they wanna go to your golf courses, go to your stores. I think it's a classic win-win situation where they're looking for an opportunity to see a nice town, and it would be great for your businesses, because they would have all these people coming to town wanting to utilize your commerce. So, does this seem like a possibility?
Council, what do you think?
Well, I'm a little disappointed that Hudson, Wisconsin isn't on your list of cities here.
You had to ask first.
I guess the deal's off, David. Thank you.
Honestly, I, I didn't consider it, because I, I didn't, it wasn't until I started seriously driving around and I saw what a wonderful park you had down here. I'd, I'd never been down along shore and examined it closely enough, and that would be a great spot for us to stop, so.
David just mentioned possibly pulling up to Lakefront Park, to the seawall there. I did get a chance to talk to him about thirty seconds before the meeting, his vessel will draft seven feet, which precludes that. That, in summertime, that's gonna be about three-foot depth there, next to the seawall. So you would have to anchor out, and assuming that that's not a problem with the Army Corps of Engineers, and I don't know if it would be or not, because they control the river, you would be anchoring actually on land owned by the city, because under Wisconsin law, you own the land under the water, unlike Minnesota. Does the council feel that there are any insurance liability problems, any rent that needs to be charged, any fee for use of services that we can't foresee? Any thoughts along those lines?
Well, I would think we could, I like this idea, but I think we should send it to the parks and send it to public safety, and let them, they can draft up, parks can draft up the fees, because they control the fees, and public safety can look at it and make sure, you know, how the people are gonna get in, where it's gonna park. I mean, I, I like the idea, but let's, let them do, get all the final proposals of agreements, and then.
Would you care to make that a motion, so we can discuss your idea?
I'll, I'll move that we send this proposal to public safety and, and parks to develop fees and guidelines and regulations.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion on that point?
I'm having a real hard time visualizing this thing out there. I mean, that's six hundred, I mean, six football fields, six hundred?
Two football fields.
Two football.
Well, if you've ever seen a tow boat come up with, with nine barges in front, which is not a rare occurrence, that happens quite often, actually, that's exactly how big this thing is gonna be, except if four stories tall.
But will it be able to be out here, or does it have to be in the channel, and you can't put it in the shipping channel?
You can't put it in the channel, the.
No, absolutely not. We would, we would have to be outside the navigation channel.
Seven-foot draft, he could be out in the Bay Area here, anchored fore and aft, and be stable for, without any problem for two, three days.
Well, I think it's a great idea to bring three hundred and fifty people into town to shop and spend money.
Well, to say nothing of the people who are gonna drive here to see this thing.
Exactly. I think it's a, it's a wonderful idea, and we should be fully supportive of it, and, you know, sure our merchants.
I think it's a great idea, too, I just wanna make sure we're covering our bases.
Sure.
Because, as you well know, David, nobody's ever done this before.
Right, right.
And we are, by the way, the first city council that he has approached, so this is his maiden run as well. And we wanna treat you well, but we wanna make sure we're covering things for our taxpayers.
And I have no problem going back to the parks.
Yeah, I, I wanted to, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Al, but I wanted to let them know, I, yeah, I'm not trying to drag it out, but our committees do more of the groundwork, you know, so you can go there and they can get more in-depth with you and find out everything, all the details, and set it up so that we'll have the right agreement.
Sure.
I guess I'd like to, I sit on the park board and the public safety committee right now, but I, what I would like to see is, we're gonna have this stationed, and how you would get the people back and forth to shore, and will it be access for the other boats to get in and out safely around your boat?
I, I was speaking with, I, I don't recall the name, I apologize, someone in your parks, and, and they were saying that perhaps you were thinking of dredging in the near future here, for whatever reasons, I don't know, it was just something they were, they were considering. And, wow, that would be great if, if it happened to coincide with our, our visiting.
Well, it could, you're not gonna be here for a couple of years.
That's right, so there's plenty of time, two and a half years away before.
Is that the timeframe? I mean, have you, what's your percentage of sold? I mean, what?
We, we just, we just started our marketing program in, in January, and we're, we're building the boat in halves, we're fifteen percent sold on the first half at this point, so.
And will the citizens of Hudson be able to take a tour of that?
Unfortunately.
These are private residences.
Well, let's say that.
They gotta look at it for a couple of days, but it's out front, they're beautiful.
Absolutely. Well, I think we'd, I think we'd arrange tours so that people who are really interested could, could stop in, but a wholesale sort of a thing where there are hundreds of people coming through, that would be pretty difficult to do, when you think about, if we, if we had to do that in every community, why that could be pretty difficult. At the same time, it isn't that we don't appreciate the communities letting us stop. Coast Guard regulations will require that everybody who comes on board has an RFID tag made up, and so it becomes a pretty elaborate process, and we have to account for. made up, and so it becomes a pretty elaborate process, and we have to account for everybody on board, so. At the same time, I could easily see us inviting all the council members on for lunch.
That's, that's a bribe, David. Is it safe to say there might be possibly, just possibly, a sales agent available to take people on tours of the development?
Thank you, that's, that's correct.
I think so.
Yes, and, and I didn't mean anything by the all.
Oh, that's okay. I'll call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
And anyone opposed? So carried. David, good luck to you.
Thank you.
And we'll have an answer back to you, or perhaps additional questions, coming from public safety and from parks.
Okay, thanks. You, you might just like to know, just a little guideline, I've been checking, there, there are about a hundred twenty stops in our agenda, and there are about sixty-five that are established ports that have already been ports for the Mississippi Queen, the American Queen. There's only, there's only three main boats that do the, the river system, and then the River Barge Company. This is the general picture, you have the deep-water ports that are set up for cruise ships, and those are very expensive stops for us. And then we have stops such as St. Paul, the Mississippi Queen, American Queen, they don't pay anything for that. There are other towns in Ohio, along the Ohio River, where they actually give, give the Mississippi Queen free water and they'll pick up their trash. Why? Because they really want their business. So I, I realize it's probably on your mind, well, what's fair? We aren't opposed to fees, we're not, we're not trying to be freeloaders or anything like that, we're just hoping for the best for us, for us, just like everyone is. And we hope that it's a real contribution to your town's economy. And, and like you said, Scott, I think it really will be the sort of thing where people turn out to come down, not only will you have our business in town, but everybody's gonna come down to see this big boat, and they'll be in the restaurants, so. Well, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, David. We're about to go into closed session, but before we do, are there any comments or communications, items for future agendas from the city attorney? City administrator?
Just a couple of announcements, the training request forms that I indicated were done, we've already started using them as far as, is the money in the budget, when are you gonna be gone, are you gonna be gone overnight, that type of thing, we already started using those. We've received the preliminary data for the two thousand and ten census, I've gone through the maps, I'm now going to start going address by address, staff and I, to make sure that we, we want to make sure we get every house that's in the city on their list, so they get the forms, so we get them, obviously get them, now we want a maximum population for all of our state aid and all that. A reminder that voting is February nineteenth, as we've been discussing. Wards one and five vote here at City Hall, five oh five, Third Street. Wards two and six vote at the Government Center, eleven oh one Carmichael, across the middle school. And wards three and four, this year will be voting at the Hudson United Methodist Church up on Laurel, fourteen oh one Laurel. Anybody that, three, all the residents of wards three and four should have gotten a postcard in the mail telling them that they are going to a different place. If you need information on where to vote, how to get registered, please do so sooner rather than later, so that we can get everything processed, get you on the voting list. And the polls are open from seven AM to eight PM. That will include the presidential primary, there are various, depending on what district you're in, there are some local races, and then there's the county judge race, the primary on that. And also, just a reminder to look over those request for proposal forms that I sent out, just so that, get back to me however we're gonna handle that, so we can get going on that, if that's how you want to proceed. That's it.
Thank you. Any other person? Betty, you have a comment?
I want to put on full council schedule, a meeting on the twentieth, the day of the normal council meeting, at five o'clock, we're gonna have a preliminary meeting with Ellers to talk about the closure of the Tiff District and the different options that we have with that.
Okay. Betty will be serving a delicious boxed lunch.
Scott, I'd like to have, we did receive a letter from the DOT about the exit one A or one B, or whatever you wanna call it, reopening that exit. And I'd like to, it says in there that if we invite him to come to talk to our council meeting, Tom Beekman, that he would be willing to do so, and I think that we should plan to have that at our next meeting.
He had so many points in that letter, I hope you all got a chance to read it, he had so many points to cover, that I think we do need to have a discussion with him to see if we can get this thing off the ground.
Yes.
Get back that, that exit from the, from the freeway, which I think we really need. Anyone else? I have a couple. Number one, bouncing off what you just lastly mentioned, in keeping with the city code, this is the next meeting after the meeting of January twenty-first, I would like to, since I was voting in the affirmative, reconsideration at our next meeting of our vote to send out RFPs for engineering firms. I'd like us to discuss that further, we've had some discussion with our existing engineering firm that I think the council needs to hear.